We can call this special meeting of the Capital City Council to order, February 4th. May I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Will everybody please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Additions and/or deletions to the agenda.
Staff has no changes to the agenda this afternoon.
Additional materials?
Yes, Mayor Clark, two correspondence were received regarding item 6A. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to oral communications by the member, by the members of the public. You'll have up to three minutes to address the city council on anything that's not under general government. Welcome in if you can state your name, please.
There is also a thing that is called, when you drink at a bar and you start driving your car and you had too much alcohol in your system, you run the risk that you are being stopped by a police force and questioned how much you had to drink that night. So that's something that I want you to consider also about, also something about marijuana legalization. I work security over a police department overseas. I know what it can cause. It leads maybe sometimes to drugs like methamphetamine and also cocaine later on when they want to use something which is stronger. So I urge you to have more security presence, especially around McDonald's on 41st Avenue. I call there sometimes because they drop garbage or alcohol bottles there on the property of CVS. But then I have a dispute maybe with the city in saying it's not only on private property, it belongs also to the city of Capitola. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none? Take it back to staff for comments?
Staff has no comments this afternoon.
Thank you. City council comments? Start on this end. Thank you. Brings us to general government and public hearings.
So we're going to talk about the strategic plan today. I want to thank everybody for coming, taking time out of their day. You know, this has been a long process that we've been working through. I want to acknowledge all the work that Chloe has done, leading it for the city, as well as Matty, our consultant, and also thank our department heads who are here really today to help answer questions should any come up. So we've done a lot of work since the last time the council met for the workshop. And rather than try and describe that all, I think I'm going to turn it over to Chloe and Matty for them to give you the presentation. So take it away, Chloe.
Thank you, city manager and mayor and council. Can everyone see what they're supposed to be seeing here? Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, like our city manager said, thank you for making time for this project throughout its entirety and to be here this afternoon. I'm going to give a very brief background because you've been involved every step of the way. So just a little refresher here. Our strategic plan project, let me just, okay, so as you know, council did request during goal setting in 2324 that staff begin to develop more strategic goals, what the five, 10, and 15 year outline. And in that budget, $50,000 was allocated towards a five-year plan project. So in September and December of 2023, this was presented to you in a formal way and council really emphasized we need something that's a living document, flexible, can really adapt with what is happening immediately with the city, but also help council and staff have a vision for the future that's longer than one budget cycle. So with that being said, you did approve a contract with Barry Dunn. That's what brings lovely Matty here with us this afternoon. She's the lead of the project and you're familiar with her at this point. Thank you, Matty. And you did also direct staff to pause the project between March and September of 2024 to let some other really big ticket items kind of come to fruition, including our amazing Wharf project. And at the Grand Wharf opening, the grand opening of the Wharf on September 25th, the project here was publicly introduced with a tabling event to really let the public know now that this is complete, let's look bigger picture and move forward in the city and what do you want to see in that process? So that being said, here's some fun little pictures of some outreach that we've done. And again, this is just a really high level background and overview of what's happened. So just as a reminder, what are the, I'm calling them ingredients of the plan, what's being considered in drafting this document? And it's so much, right? So this is just a brief list, but it is a combination between existing data and documents from the city and also community as well as new input that we received in a variety of different ways through outreach and with Barry Dunn's help. So we've gotten lots of input. We had a community forum in person. We had online and hard copy surveys. We had targeted interviews with stakeholders in the community, with city council, with the candidates at the time. This was done in the fall of last year, keep that in mind. And also our employees, we had focus groups led by Barry Dunn virtually and in person. And also this amazing, really, really exhaustive online portal that allowed 24-hour access on the internet for our community. So that was our new data and then existing, you know, you have a list here, I don't need to read it all, but like I said, city documents and plans like the general plan, housing element, along with community-driven focus such as Vision Capitola. We've gotten, I think, more than eight years of likely voter surveys with data that was analyzed, visioning documents, and of course, our budgets as well. So that's just kind of filling you in on what you already know. And then plan development in about mid-November, our current then-city council and candidates came together to review all of the analysis of all of that data. You'll remember, Matty led that as well. And we were presented with the environmental scan, which really combined the new data with employee feedback and existing data from the other surveys. It was reviewed, yourselves were identifying themes, seeing what was emerging through all of that, and also reviewed mission, vision, and values at that time. So really, I think that brings me to the end of my portion of the presentation. I want to hand it over to Matty to bring us up to date, but I also can of course pause for any questions that you may have. Thank you. And I'll bring up your sides.
Great. Thank you, Chloe. Thank you, mayor and city council. Happy to be here this afternoon. And thank you, Jamie, for that introduction as well. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the process and where we are. So next slide, Chloe. This is a little bit of background for anyone who, one, might be tuning in just now, as well as reminding everyone what a strategic plan is and the importance of a strategic plan. So on the next slide, I am there in the middle. We also had Michelle Kennedy, who is the lead facilitator who was on site during this process, and then some people that were behind the scenes, Seth Hedstrom, who's our project principal, and Karen Witcher, who's also a facilitator, who helped in the data analysis and part of this process. So where we are, we are now in phase three. Chloe went through phase one and phase two, great. And we are in that final piece of phase three, which is a workshop to discuss the initial strategic plan with you all today. Some guidelines for effective participation. We always mention these in any of our plan development sessions and our work sessions. And the reminder here is for city council as well as anyone who might be in the room, why we do this. So because we are reviewing an initial draft plan, we want to remember these things. So speaking from I statements, focus on the discussion at hand, please ask questions to not only me, Jamie and Chloe, but also staff that might be here as they were instrumental in the development of this plan as well. And I think that's all for effective participation. So what is a strategic plan and why are we here? So strategic plan helps cities and counties and even special districts throughout the country help plan for the future. This plan really, the goals are to make sure that our priorities are set as the city and that resources can be allocated effectively. Resources include people, tools, technology, and other parts that make that possible. We're focusing on the issues that are most important to the community, as well as you, mayor and city council, to make sure that this is the city of the future that you all want it to be. Some other key points to remember is it sets a clear direction for the future. So the vision and the mission that we'll go over today and the options, what we want to remember here is it's the North Star. Where are we heading and what do we want the community to look like and feel like five years from now? Then parts of the plan that come in a little bit later in strategic priorities and objectives help us to determine those goals and how those will get done. You all, city council, set the policy and the directives and then staff implement those. And a lot of that comes out in those objectives. And then finally, the outcomes of the plan. So how will this be reported on? How will the measures be tracked? And how can you then report out, staff can report out the progress of the plan to you all and the community? This is one of my favorite pictures to show. We talked a little bit about parts of the elements. The two things to call out here is this is a living document. It guides decision-making and policymaking for the next five years, but it should be fluent enough to be adaptable and changing when we come to that objective level. We always say, especially when we are doing this work early, pandemic changed a lot of things and we want to remember that things can happen and can change. And so we want mission and vision and priorities to stay the same, but those objectives help you get to where you want to go and those are more fluid. What comes next after the final adoption of the plan is actually an implementation plan. That is the how and the action steps that staff are going to take to make sure that things get done in the plan and we as consultants provide support in that. So a little bit more about plan development. Chloe did a great job of summarizing this here. Where we are is in the top right corner. So we are in the review of the mission, vision, values, strategic priority and goals. That's what we're doing today. The strategic plan elements that we are going to review today are all four of these. The mission, what you do now for whom and how you do it. Vision, where are you growing? What does that future really look like five years from now? Sometimes visions are even 10 years from now to help support that development. Values, how does the organization, both the city council and staff, what do they value in the decisions that are made that do not change in order to make sure that things get done? And then strategic goals or strategic priorities in this case are the focus areas to move towards that vision. This is the last kind of picture of how it all fits together and each one of those are the elements we're going to review today. I always like to say your vision statement is at the top and then the pillars of what support the house are under the strategic priorities. And we will be reviewing all of these elements today. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions before we move on. Okay, seeing none. So now we get into the discussion points for today. So we will be reviewing the mission statement, the vision statement, and the values first. So these are the main ideas that we will talk about and have a discussion on. So the current mission statement is there on the left. The mission of the city of Capitola is to represent the community and establish policy to provide highest quality services to our residents, visitors, and businesses. Now on the right, there are two proposed mission statements. From all of the information we gathered, as well as the existing documents, these are the two mission statements that we are bringing back to you for discussion based on feedback from staff and where we are in the process. So the two that we're going to discuss today are there on the right. Are there any questions or comments about the mission statement now? We will go through, walk through all the elements and then we'll have a discussion point on each individual element. So we'll talk about the mission statement and the options, then we'll talk about vision and go through. What we're really trying to do today is get feedback from you all. What do you like? What do you, if you have a preference on option one or option two? And even, we can do a little bit, I don't like to do this during plan development, but this is really the moment to do wordsmithing, right? Is there a word that doesn't quite resonate and is there a different word that might resonate better? We'll definitely come up in our conversation today. So now we'll review the vision statement. The current vision statement is the city council's vision for the city of Capitola to be the most desirable place to live, work, and play. So this is a vision statement of the city council. However, during this refinement process and the review of the strategic plan, we want the vision statement to not only be for city council, but also for city staff and the community. So we have offered two options for vision statements that kind of encompass everything to make sure that the city together is moving forward towards the future instead of it just being the city's council's vision, but it's really a vision for the community. Any questions on the vision statement options right now?
Just a question. Last time when we met, whatever, a couple months ago, we were working on wordsmithing some of these. And so did you take that input and then work with staff and then this is where you're coming back with the recommendation?
Yes, exactly.
I know we were wordsmithing some of those ourselves. Those don't look like they're directly, I think, reflected up there. So you wordsmithed again?
So what we did, during the plan development, we took all of your input and then presented kind of condensed versions of that because there were a lot of words that came up in plan development. If I remember provision directly, there were somewhere between 15 and 19 words. So we did some word selection in there. Part of this process is, yes, we talked to staff about that and even employees and did another employee review of what these are. The point of today too is to bring it to you all to do more of that refinement. So if there are different words that you want to change, we will do that today.
Does everyone feel comfortable with the mission and the vision so far?
So are we waiting to discuss?
It is up to you all. Typically, I go through everything so you can see everything and then we discuss those elements. We go back in the slide deck really and talk about them individually if you all are okay with that process.
That sounds great.
Okay. Just then you can see everything kind of in a full picture in order to do that. So the value statements are next. The current values are listed here. This is what is also city council's values. So we came back and kind of condensed those as well as took the information from staff to present what's back to you. The big thing to remember with values is these are the things you all are going to consider when making decisions moving forward as well as staff is going to consider and the way in which they implement your policy. The draft value statements are on the next slide. These are the six proposed areas. You can see them there. They're in bold. And then the statements that follow is really how those are going to happen. So the specifics and the things to consider when doing each one of these. The reason we do a statement after the value is so many of these words can mean different things to different people while we read them. So we hope that the words following the statement help to clarify and really give that definition of what it can look like. Are there any questions about the proposed value statements at this time? Our proposed strategic priorities, here you can see the six areas that are proposed as strategic priorities. These are those pillars that you saw, pillars of the house, I like to say. These are the focus areas for the next five years. They are sustainable infrastructure, community safety, attainable housing, economic opportunity, healthy families, community and environment, and accountable government. So from all of the information provided during our plan development with city council and candidates as well as staff, we went back and kind of put these into buckets of information that they can be presented as strategic priorities. Similar to the value statements, we have sentences following them to kind of define what that means. We call these our goal statements and the reason we do is that's kind of the mini-vision, if you will, for a strategic priority. This is what you want to achieve in the next five years related to each specific strategic priority. One thing to note, these are not in any particular order. They are not in order of value or preference. They are just in a order. Sometimes our communities like to present them in alphabetical order or order of preference. However, at this time, they are not in order of preference. So that is part of our conversation that we can talk about today as well. Are there any questions about the strategic priorities? So now we're going to go through each strategic priority and they're just coming up in a larger way for you to read them. And we're going to discuss the objectives on the next slide. So the objectives for sustainable infrastructure are on the next slide. These are the tactical elements that staff has put together with your outlook for the future. So one of the questions we asked you all during plan development was, in five years, if this strategic priority was achieved, what are the outcomes that happened because of this? And those are the objectives with your feedback as well as staff that we have put together. During our review process, which comes next, we can get into the details of these and provide more information from me if I can recall or staff is needed. So these are the objectives for sustainable infrastructure. Any questions here?
Again, I'm just clarifying. Are we giving our comments to edit now or we're going to wait for you to?
Okay, that's okay. Sometimes there's questions and I always want to answer the questions before we go to the review process and that's why. The next one is the strategic priority of community safety. The next one is the strategic priority of community safety. The objectives are as followed. There are more detailed objectives here. One thing to note is objectives. We have everything from six to 10 are great. If there's any more than 10, we start to get to the point where there might not be enough direction and know where to go. So these are objectives for safety. Any questions on these at this time? Seeing none, thanks Chloe. Our next strategic priority area is attainable housing and the objectives are as followed. Any questions on attainable housing? The next one is economic opportunity and the objectives are as followed. Any questions on economic opportunity? The next one is healthy families, community and the environment. Any questions on the objectives for this strategic priority? Thanks Chloe. And finally accountable government. The objectives are as followed. Any questions on accountable government? Councilmember Jensen, did you have a question? Thank you. Next slide Chloe. So now we're going to go back and do a discussion point on each. We will start with the mission statement and work our way through. So if we can go back to the slide, the two options of the mission statement. Here is where we can have a discussion point as well as discuss the exact wording or choices if you have a preference on option one or two. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to facilitate part of this process.
Does everybody feel comfortable with jumping right into the questions?
I just have a question. Where does the, you know, our last workshop, we have some of the matrix on how people respond to the questions. How does that interact with at all today when like, I think this is the first time I've seen the mission statements. And so try and analyze those, make sure that those are in play with what we, our outreach that we did?
Absolutely. So the word choices and everything that comes through mission, vision and values, the priorities that come out in all of the outreach is where we focus on those. So a lot of the time we find those wording choices are mentioned by community members, business owners, anyone who was a stakeholder in the process. And that is why there's some of those choices of words. One of the, or two of the ones that come up that are on for mission statement especially was a coastal community that came up a lot in valuing that. And that was an important part of the mission statement here. Other choices that are made and the words happen throughout all of that information gathering. And we take all of that into consideration in the crafting of these mission statements.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm missing the part of the connection back to a refresher on, I mean, I think it was back in November when we looked at, like some of the numbers and out of the 220, 230 people that responded, it's hard to just reflect back to remembering what those goals were from the outreach to making sure that that is in our mission statement today. So maybe understanding more of the process and I don't know, maybe I'm the only one a little confused right now, but would be, we're going through, we're going to have the mission statement that we're going to best think reflects it and then we're going to send it out to the community. When is the community do a matrix of looking at what the results were? How that, to make sure that everything's in line over the process? And I know it's hard for you because you overtopped the two councils. There are some council members that were out here before, but there are two that are new.
Sure. So the two things I will say is one, yes, in November, we went over the environmental scan. I think that's where we're talking about councilmember Jensen. We do have that ready if we need to pull up information to remind you all as well as the community and can review parts of that. But we as the consultants as well as staff reviewed all of that while developing these mission statements. And then I think the second part of your question was also about the community review or the public review of the process. Did I catch that?
Yeah.
So what will happen after today is the discussion that you all have. We will make updates to the mission, vision, values and strategic priorities based on your recommendations. And then this actually goes back out for a public review period for people to give more input and direct input on the process. Chloe or Jamie, is there anything to add to that point?
No, I think staff is prepared to send out a mailer. All city residents basically with a QR code that would link back to our website if council directs us to release the plan for public review at the end of this hearing. So that's the goal is to come up with a plan that you're comfortable putting out for public review.
Would that go to only people that have had input so far? Is it going to go broader to all residents?
All residents.
And to follow up with that, when we looked at outreach, I was going through some of the data that you provided to us back on November 8th. You know, like 26 or 28% were people from not in Capitola. So then how does that outreach happen to that?
Yeah, so some of that 28% that I think you're talking about typically happens from business owners who don't live in Capitola or workers who work in Capitola but don't live here. So it comes back out to the larger region. A lot of that is Santa Cruz County as those, as that feedback came in. So that will, anyone who responded to social pinpoint, what actually happens is we don't have access directly to their emails, but social pinpoint keeps them if they decided to put them in. And what is prepared is a news update or a news flash is what it's called that actually pushes out information to anyone who gave information on social pinpoint originally. So those 1,900 people who visited and/or the people who left a comment will get feedback or give the opportunity to give feedback on the review of the plan.
So to summarize, approximately let's say 250 people responded and about 28% was from outside of Capitola, right?
That was directly from the social pinpoint data, but that's not just people who were reviewed in the process.
That's people that participated in the survey results.
Correct, in the survey particularly, but they could have also been on the ideas wall, gotten a hard copy of the survey or the other outreach that happened, especially the social media push that I know Chloe did on a lot of people that directed them to the site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Honestly, neither really speaks to me. I don't know why, but neither really speaks to me. Instead, can we, can we try like the City of Capitola is dedicated to fostering a vibrant coastal community with instead reliable and inclusive services?
So vibrant, would it be a word that you would like to add?
Can you remind me, did we have a mission statement up on the screen that we were working on in November?
We did. So that's the current mission statement that's on the left.
No, a new one, an update. I feel like a lot of these words were in a document. I think as councilmember Jensen was talking about, the council was, the council was working on in November. Do we have exact, what that looked like, the way the meeting ended?
Because I thought we kind of.
It was pretty, it was.
It was pretty close. What has happened since then is staff gave some direct input to and employees gave direct input to make these updated. So they had a couple of words, I mean, of the, the staff that presented as well as the department heads, they made suggestions and updates to this as well. And so that's why it's kind of a taking everyone's feedback and fitting it in and part of the process. So that would be what you're pointing to Jamie.
Okay, so sorry if I'm beating this to pulp. Are we going to like receive public comment on these items before we're discussing so that, like, so we're getting that input if people want to give it today here? Because it seems odd for us to have a discussion about these items without hearing any public comment. But I just don't know how this is supposed to go, sorry.
And no, I'd like to get a more public comment, but I think we can get that once we send this out to the public. They will have a chance to talk later.
My understanding is we are, we need to have a draft though in order, before we send it out for more public comment, right?
Okay.
I think this is the meeting today.
So not this, a different draft?
We have to decide on one or the other or to come up with a draft that we agree to. And then once we have the draft done from today's meeting, that goes out to the public for comment before it becomes, before it comes back to us to be finalized. That's my understanding.
Not today.
I think we're using two different words for the same thing. So you're going to need to have public comment today because this is a public meeting. So the question I think councilmember Morgan might have been asking is what point during this process is it appropriate to go to public comment? You know, you might want to do it now. You've given, everyone's received an overview of the current status of the draft plan. And then you could get the public's feedback about maybe which mission statement they like better or the value statement, those sorts of things. And then ultimately, at the end of today, hopefully the council says the document's good to go for public comment. We would send out a big news blitz, media blitz to try to let everybody know and get feedback from the wider community beyond the people who are here today. Does that help?
Yeah, I feel like I would prefer to get the people that took their time out today to come. If anybody wishes to speak, not saying that anybody has to. But if there is some comments, I would like to hear those before we go into discussion to like, that's not how we typically run a meeting. So that, because I don't want to be putting stuff out there in our discussion and then have the community come and say, oh, you're missing the mark, you know? And then we just keep going back and forth, so.
Yeah, I could, I could put that out to council. Would everybody feel comfortable doing that for each item for the mission and the vision? That's what I'm asking, yeah. If we did, then we can keep it to a minute or around there. Or reasons of keeping it?
Yeah.
Not too lengthy, but just putting that out for you guys. It's you, it sounds like that's what.
Yeah.
That's what mayor Morgan's asking for.
Yeah, I mean, we could just say, hey, is there any public comment on mission, vision, values and then the priorities?
Yeah, I'd say let's ask that now and have them give our, their comments now.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Jensen, you good with that?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that this document is the first time that anybody's been seeing it. Is that correct? And so we have, I think some, maybe five or six people from the community that showed up. I'm just kind of missing the mark of like, I know it's a draft that's going to go out to the community, but I have some reluctance in just even going through the draft, just looking at sporadically right now and saying, oh, that's going to be a mission tape that I would call a draft to go out to the community that hasn't had a lot of buying yet. I mean, I know it's a draft, but it seemed like where we were at our last working session, that we were working forward to against that. And so maybe I'm, I'm just a little confused by the process of where we are today to get it to a draft that's going to be sent out to multiple people. And I mean, all everybody in the city as a draft and we're just looking out for some feedback right off the gate and pick between one and two and go on to the next one. But I'm open for other comments.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Well, regarding the first question, I'm fine with going to public comment here in the chambers. Regarding the process, yeah, I don't think I'd be the best answer to that. I think I'd like to hear what the consultants or city staff can maybe give us an outline of the steps that have happened so far again and reiterate the process.
All right, and before we maybe go to questions to the public, can you explain a little bit more for us to kind of clarify anything?
I can.
Thank you.
So the intent of today is to workshop these again. So similar what we did in the plan development is come up with one statement to present back out to the community for each of these areas. The reason we're bringing this to you today in a work style session is to have this discussion and have this conversation and be able to present something back out into the community. We do this across the country. This is my 39th strategic plan doing it and in this way. The reason we bring it to you all in a work session right now is to say, we've done all this plan review, we did it up to plan development and we went back out to staff to get some more input. And the reason we're having this conversation today in a work session is to do that piece of getting a draft ready to present back out to the community. So my goal and my hope for today is to lead that conversation, to help support you all in making those decisions and those words to councilmember, our back's conversation or comment about having vibrancy added. Those are the kind of feedback and kind of elements that would help me as well as staff create and maybe tweak option one or option two as well as hearing from the public is typical in this process. So hearing the public who is here today, their thoughts and comments during today's session is typical.
Great, sure, go ahead.
Thanks. And just to be clear, after we give our feedback today and then it goes out to the broader public for additional feedback, it's going to come back to us to then reflect upon what we've heard from the public.
So what comes back to you all is the findings of the survey that we have. And we have a draft ready and we can always share that with you. We ask the same community review is what we typically call it. So it doesn't get confused with the public word, right? The public review or the public comment. Community review piece in that survey, it comes back to you all with those findings. So similar to that environmental scan with graphs and numbers, it tells you what the people responding to the survey feel about each of those. So having one mission statement to provide to them. We ask the question, how strongly do you feel that this mission statement represents the City of Capitola? And if they don't feel that it does, they also give edits and word comments. So they can say, I don't like the word vibrancy, I would rather have blank. I don't like the word coastal, I would rather have blank. And they give those comments as well. And that information comes back to you all also to consider through this process before final adoption. What we do as consultants in that period of time is we review all the data and we come up with other suggestions of ways that that data from the community review can be incorporated to update or edit any of the elements. And that's what is presented to you all with the findings, the updates and then hopefully an adoption at that time of the strategic plan. Does that help councilmember with the process? Great.
Yes, thank you. I guess based on that, if we can ask Madam Clerk if we can give one minute comment to anybody in the public. We'll go through item through item, open up that now for public comment on, on the mission statement. For mission statement. This is not our general public commenting time. We're going to go through item through item, our mission statement, our vision. We're going to, we're going to stop at each one and then have input by the public. Welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, welcome. So one minute, first of all, please give us the respectful amount of time when we make the effort to come to these meetings. I would appreciate that. It would take a lot more than a minute to comment on any of these things. So all I'm going to comment on is the process. Thank you, city manager, for teaching our veterans on the dais today how Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act work and for you to even think that we wouldn't be allowed to have public comment today when it says right on item six of the agenda that that's part of how public meetings are run. Please take a refresher course. Alex, for you to sit up there and act like it's okay for you to say, yeah, I think we might be okay allowing them to speak today. It's not your choice. Thank you, new councilmember Morgan, for asking for us to play by the rules. There are rules and laws in place for a reason and we follow them. Okay, so these guys just went to class to learn how to do that? Take a refresher course and let's do things the right way in this city.
Thank you. And just to remind everybody, we'll be in time for public comment. We'll have to get up to three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Can you please, I'm looking at the mission statement and I'm looking at the word community. I understand that encompasses everybody. Can you please break down or give me the definition of why inclusive services, community services, dependable services? I think inclusivity is kind of redundant to, to community and I don't think it necessarily belongs there. So unless you guys feel otherwise, I'd just like to get a, a definition of what inclusive means, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on our mission statement? Seeing none? Should we move right on to our vision? At this time, I'm just going to ask for more public comment on our vision statement. If anybody'd like to add, share ideas, feedback. Seeing none, we can move on to our next item? Or you want to take a minute to look at the proposed values and see if they'd like to make a comment?
I'm sorry, are we going back to editing the mission statement or the vision statement?
Yes, we wanted to hear from the public to make sure those.
So we're going through every item?
Go through each one first. Go through each one first. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Strategic priorities. Seeing none, we'll move to the next.
Mayor, would you like me to run through the objectives for each six for public comment? Or should we go back for your discussion? It's up to you. As you said, there will be formal public comment later.
Right, but I was just giving everybody the opportunity since it's to break it down. So. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Objectives? On economic opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move on. Anything on healthy families, community, and environment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Accountable government. Is that the last one? Thank you. So that we can bring that back to more council questions if we have more questions. Or our presenter. Anything further on the presentation?
No, we were pulling up photos of, from the plan development sessions. If you all wanted to review and kind of remember what you all talked about on Plan Development Day and what that looked like for any of these areas, I can pull up those photos and share you or share in the, in the Zoom meeting and up on the presentation if you think that would be helpful.
Help for anybody?
Maybe specifically the mission statement, if we have any of those.
Yep.
Okay, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Let me get in the meeting and I can figure that out.
I do want to say that a noon meeting for most working folks is really difficult. So if we wanted to engage more of the public who has to work on a weekday, this time probably would not have been the best time to do this. That's it.
So I think what we'll do is we'll email you, Chloe, the, the photos from the work session, last work session, then you can share them.
And I will send the mission statement first, and then if there's other ones we want to review, we can.
Do we need to take a minute then? Before get prepared for this, we can take a quick break?
We can take a quick break, yeah. It looks like we just sent the email out.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back. Do we have all the photos ready to go? And still we're on council questions and we're bringing it back for reviewing of our previous meeting.
We're a mission.
Yes, so your mission, your words are straight down the middle. If we could zoom in a little bit, Chloe, and then we can always read them out. This was from the consensus building part. So what we did, and for the, the, the public who is in attendance today and might not have been at the plan development session, each one of these color stickies was an idea added by council members or candidates at the time to represent what they think is important about the city and its mission. Can you zoom in just a little bit more, Chloe? And we can just go down, go down that list. So it wasn't a complete vision or mission statement, excuse me, that you all came up with, but it was the words that you all hoped to add. Part of the consensus building and part of what we all do as consultants, we use ICA top methodology, which is a way and process to include a lot of people in the update of a strategic plan. This happens in multiple steps in order to engage parts of the community. So you all came up with these ideas, they were presented back to staff, and we are giving you ideas today. So the first one reads, the city of Capitola strives to, and then there's an ellipses afterwards. The second one reads, ensure high quality of life for all residents. I'm reading it out so everyone can, one for public record and two can hear. Provide high quality of life and services to all. The next idea was adding words like inclusivity and accessibility. Another one was increase inclusivity. Another idea was power to the people. And then two final ideas were collaborative and active partnership, and then policies and governance. So these were the ideas that you all wanted to have represented in the mission statement.
And can we go back to the two options we have? Are you presented? Sorry, Chloe. Staggering.
This is what we're here for.
Right, literally, this is my job. Don't worry about it. Just thank you for your patience. Oh, boy.
And to remind everyone, this was between public and Councilmember?
So that one that we just reviewed was the plan development day one that council and candidates came up with. I think there was some public that were also in the room during that time as well. And then those, we all, as the consultants, I guess Michelle and I, came up with statements that we presented to staff and staff ended up with these two as options to provide to you all. So this includes staff recommendations and employee recommendations as well.
Thank you. But the public wasn't invited to that meeting?
The first plan development session, the public was invited, yes. What thoughts or comments or changes would you have to either of these two options, Councilmembers?
If we combine the two in terms of language, can we try? Let's see. We are a dynamic coastal community committed to delivering reliable inclusive services that strengthen Capitola's sense of connection and belonging.
Yes, so I got the first part. We are a dynamic coastal committee, or community, committed to providing dependable and inclusive services that enhance Capitola's sense of belonging. Did I hear that correctly?
It's, we are a dynamic coastal community committed to delivering reliable inclusive services that strengthen Capitola's sense of connection and belonging.
Could we maybe keep the part about the participatory governance, some type of, something along those lines? It doesn't have to be those words. I just think if we're going to kind of connect them, I feel like that's what that second one is missing.
I think it was clearly highlighted in two of the notes there talking about accessibility, I guess, power to the people, and then.
You're welcome.
Regarding about policymaking, so I think those were some high, things that were highlighted. So to make sure that those are highlighted and included. And then when we talked about inclusivity, I think accessibility was highlighted. I think that, if I recall correctly, that was mostly talking about accessibility for people attending, but also I think we talked about accessibility as having people be able to participate overall. I think those are some key things that should be put in there.
Yeah, to the public's comment about inclusivity, or I would, I would, I like the word inclusivity. I would also be fine if we switched it to accessibility. God, I had ADA on the brain and that's what I was going to. Just because we do touch a lot on ADA sort of in some of the other strategies that we have coming up. Maybe that's a better word. And I would also like to keep the coastal aspect in there. I think that's important for, for sort of that broader vision or mission. Sorry, we're on mission.
So I did have a note about participatories and also inclusive slash accessibility. Did I miss another comment that I think you made, Councilmember Jensen, around that participatory feeling?
Just the accessibility part and then making sure that around the policy part of having, I just don't know if participatory governance covers how much was highlighted in that one workshop that we had.
Maybe use accessible governance?
So I have an option, and I'm going to get the Zoom link from Chloe to show you as I type, but I do have an option for you all to hear based on your feedback. We are a dynamic coastal community committed to providing dependable and accessible services that enhance Capitola's sense of belonging within our participatory governance. And that piece at the end goes to policymaking, but it is more on the governance side because you all and staff does more than just policymaking, but they also implement so it can help. Governance is a good word to, to support both sides.
I like that.
I like that.
I do, too.
Okay. So I will be able to share that when we come back through. So I'll get the Zoom link in the end and be able to share all of that as we, as we do this. Okay? Any other comments on that? Are you ready to move on to the vision statement?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just wonder if we could put back something to do with striving to ensure a high quality of life. I'm not sure if that was really covered. You know, I guess thriving is related to that, but I think a little bit more general in my mind.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion that we add to the vision statement? Because I think high quality of life goes to where you all want to be in five to 10 years and not so much in the mission and what you all do.
And Maddy, I wanted to touch on the point for those who weren't able to attend before. When we were working with you guys, you explained to us sort of where you kind of want the length for these, if you wouldn't mind touching on that, just so people have the background.
Absolutely, Councilmember. So the thing with a mission statement that we want to remember, it is a short, easy to remember, especially for staff and the community, where you are and who you, what you do. Whereas a vision statement, we want to make sure it's not word salad. And that usually comes up in a vision statement, but it is something short also, rememberable and unique to you all. So one thing I really like about the, the, the statement you all said was you're a coastal community. That touches Capitola and makes it unique. We want it to be unique enough that it mentions and points to you all as a city, whereas if you remove coastal community, that might be any community across the country and not unique to you all. And then to the statement piece that Councilmember Morgan was talking about, the shortness, and when I say word salad, I don't want to, five adjectives and a comma in between them, that gets too much and harder for people to remember. Welcome. Any other comments on mission statement before we move on?
I have another comment. I'm not, I guess, I, I'm not super serious about this, but I just want to give my thoughts around the difference between accessible versus inclusive. To me, I think inclusive brings about a meaning of that when, what the city does, it does with keeping in mind that there are many different groups of people, whether that be gender, race, income, homeowner versus renter, and that we're trying to accommodate to the best ability that we can, all of those diverse populations that live within the city border. Whereas accessible almost to me feels more like everybody is able to access, access the services that we offer, but that, those services don't necessarily, you know, were built or derived with inclusivity in mind. So that, that's the only difference for me.
Councilmember Peterson, would you like to make a change to that statement based on your comment?
Well, I, I would just like to put that out there and I'm fine if we keep it the way it is, but if anybody else believes that we should change it one way or the other, I'm happy to hear any feedback.
And I have to agree. During the workshop, that, that was my sticky note. Inclusivity is my sticky note. I think it's important that we, as a city, be considerate of all abilities of all situations where, you know, a single dad or, or, you know, someone who's working multiple jobs may not have access to the same, to our city or our meetings the same way as someone who is retired and has the means to or lives two blocks away. So I, I personally do like the word inclusive because it means something way more dynamic and different than just simply being accessible.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion, unless Councilmember you want to do this? We can throughout this process, if you want to take a formal vote, if you all feel that that's needed, that is possible, I've done it before. But I also want to make a suggestion of what I'm hearing both of you say, is I think that's really a value that's important. And that can be included and discussed in that value section to make it specific that we can include that word and give a little more definition behind it.
I don't think we need to vote word for word on what it is. I just look at a mission statement, it's a very general, what's our, our mission? And I think a mission would be somebody reading it just where we are from way up, you know, at a thousand feet and then getting down to a specific thing. So I hope we weren't going to go through and just vote by word by word. So I hope.
That would, that would be a little difficult for us to go word by word. And a lot of the words have the same meaning. And I think it might mean something to somebody else, but literally they have the same meaning. So we could just move forward from there, I think would be fine. And thank God it's a living document.
Okay, vision statement.
Do you want to look at the picture?
Please.
So the vision statement is all the, all of these are related to the vision statement. These were all feedback given. So the vision statement is all the, all of these are related to the vision statement. These were all feedback given related to it. So we have village vibrancy, tourism and protect residents, sense of belonging and well-being. And then I'm gonna move up to the right and then I'll remove down. Thanks, Chloe. I can't read my own handwriting. Resilience and adaptability. The city is, and then an ellipses, vibrant. Opportunities to thrive, economic opportunity, including jobs and housing and family. Environmental health and stewardship. And then if we can scroll down, I think we said sense of belonging and well-being, family-friendly, community well-being, diverse tourism and access to the beach. You can be you is in quotes, and then seaside community or town. Something to note in the vision statement that was presented to both council and candidates as well as staff. Some of these are values. And some of these you will see or did see that came up as values and those words were tied over to that vision statement.
I personally like the first one, but just would add resilient and family-friendly. So the city of Capitola is a resilient and family-friendly community.
So you would add it for family-friendly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with the first one.
Other comments?
I think I really like economic opportunities.
Rather than growth.
Rather than, oh, economic growth, yeah, not necessarily, because I think there's a difference between economic growth and economic opportunity, although they are, you know, very intimately related. I think it should be the city's job to, you know, make sure that economic growth works for the residents of the city and isn't just economic growth for the purpose of economic growth.
I think that was noted, that was kind of missing is the family-friendly part about family.
The first one, it is family-friendly listed?
If we're just, oh, we're swarking off the second one, not the second.
Maybe we could just swap out economic growth in the first one with economic opportunities.
Yeah, that's what I'd like.
Okay. What other comments do you all have?
I think it's great. Number one, adding that two different items would be, would be great.
Okay, not seeing any other comments. I'll read it out as stated. The city of Capitolia, Capitolia? That's a new one. The city of Capitola is a resilient and family-friendly community that balances tourism and economic opportunities with residents' needs, so everyone is welcome.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I think we'll move on to values. So these are the proposed value statements as they are. First, something that was mentioned a little bit ago was the difference between diversity and accessibility. There is an option to add those words in here somewhere, somewhere, as well as possibility to add a separate value. We try not to go more than six, but it is possible. I've had some communities go as much as eight that we can add in here. Is there any general comment on that first or the proposed values as they are written above?
No, I think we struggled with this on our workshop and we had eight, but we narrowed it down to these six. And I don't, I think we just put everything in there that we wanted, but let council go.
Can we see the sticky notes? Is this available for this section?
They are, and I should have a link, Jamie said, so give me a minute to open it up in mine and then I can share. I'm gonna stop sharing. We can bring these back at any moment, okay? I'll promote you, Maddy. Okay. This is what we had for strategic priorities. These were the sticky notes that came out there. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at values. My bad. One second. Thank you for your patience. Here is what we had on values. Yeah, I'm gonna read them and I'm going to also zoom in, but I'm having the same difficulty that I think Chloe was having earlier. So I'll read them out loud. Community, heart, responsive and safe. Fiscal stewardship of resources, service and responsiveness. Striving, adaptable and constantly improving. Open, honest and ethical, respect all. Courteous and dignity. And then the top is communicate or cultivate community identity. Balance historic and increasing growth, historic preservation, adaptability and the culture of the city as it changes.
I would like to add an amendment or some more language under fiscal sustainability. So we engage in responsible financial stewardship, prioritizing resources and supporting economic development to increase revenue and maintain and deliver quality services now and into the future.
So adding supportive economic development?
And supporting economic development to increase revenue.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I see from a value standpoint where it fitted about the quaintness and making sure that we quaintness of Capitola and the where, you know, what we heard a lot from these feedbacks and results, how does that fit into values at the same time we're looking at? Having a vision and changing how the values come in, making sure, just making sure that that's reflected somewhere. If it is a value or not.
Yeah, so I think there's a way to, we can fit that in responsible growth because future generations, we can fit it in there protecting or valuing today and the future.
That'd be great.
And I would just add to that. It's, to me, it sounds like a little bit under dynamic innovation where it says maintaining capitalist charm. That's, to me, sounds a little bit like maintaining the quaintness.
I think it should go under responsible growth. For me, that makes the most sense.
I think, I mean, there's a comment there, safeguarding the natural environment, resources and history. So there is that there. We're respecting the history. We're respecting Capitola's charm. You know, I think the language is in there.
I think having highlighted in the growth part, so we, when we reflect back on, we talk about growth, have that included.
So do you want to move maintaining capitalist charm from dynamic innovation to responsible growth?
Just trying to see. Yeah, probably. I think it's more about growth than it is about innovation.
I agree on the growth. I think, I think that's where the quaintness should fall in.
Is charm the right word? I mean, I don't know. Charms. I'm open. I mean, I don't know.
Thought we weren't gonna vote on each word.
Pardon me?
We were not voting on each word.
No.
I'm fine with charm. If we want to use quaint instead, that's fine too, unique.
I will share with you the word quaint was all over the last time the city did this. And it was funny because it's sort of slowly kind of been dropped from the lexicon because it just, it's like, exactly does that mean? And so I think charm is what we've been using more, but it was, I think, 35, 30 years ago, the last time the city did this, I think.
Must stay relevant.
I'm fine with charm.
Me too.
Do you all think that there's anything else missing or anything that needs to be edited or updated in these values and their subsequent goal statements?
I would just change the word under dynamic innovation, the part where evolving community needs. Oh, sorry, sorry. Incorporating the best solutions for evolving community needs while maintaining capitalist charm.
We thought that maintaining capitalist charm was going to responsible or growth based on the conversation that just happened.
Forget what I said.
Any other comments or questions? Great. So we'll move to strategic priorities. And I will say that the specifics that came out of here are in the objectives. So almost every outcome from the sticky notes, they were actually large white sheets of paper in this sense, came out in the objectives. I don't believe we need to pull up the sticky notes for that reason in each of the objectives, but I do want to dive in to both the statement and the objectives for each individual strategic priorities because this really sets that course for what the next five years will look like for each individual objective. So let's start with sustainable infrastructure. Comments or questions on this statement?
Well, are we?
I think this is both. So make sure that things that are new can also happen and maintaining existing.
I'd like to add something about road maintenance that comes up quite often.
So instead of safe streets, would you add road maintenance in addition?
Well, there's safe streets, I think of like traffic and e-bikes, but the road maintenance would be the potholes.
Perhaps we can add, we'll build and maintain.
That's fine.
I like that.
Any other edits?
Another highlight should be about accessibility from like ADA. So at the same time, I think a lot of times we focus just on bikes and safe streets and safety, but from an ADA standpoint, seniors having, you know, curb cuts and stuff like that. So I don't want to get down to the nitty gritty, but just highlighting, you know, accessibility from that standpoint.
Absolutely. So that is what accessible means in this goal statement. It does come out in the objectives. Councilmember, that is number five, listen to the objectives. The purpose of the goal statement is this is kind of your mini North Star, if you will, in sustainable infrastructure, where you're going and what you want to obtain in five years, but definitely those specific objectives come out on the next page.
I was just saying, highlighting the word ADA, I think with accessible to me kind of starts to get back to like that you can access something, but like to get into when we talk about, say, and we're saying streets. I think we should highlight ADA. So we're talking about at the same time sidewalks, you know, there's another word that
Well, do we want that in this part or because it's part of the bullets?
We can add sidewalks to the statement. I would advise against saying American Disabilities Act in this statement just because it's long. But if you want to call out sidewalks as that specific ability or walkability, I also heard you say.
If we think it's covered in other things, I'm just saying, I was just looking at, we're highlighting some key things and I think that's important. If it's somewhere else we can look at.
Let's go to the next slide and discuss that. And then we can always add a word back to the strategic priorities as well.
I'm gonna comment. For the first one, I believe we already have multiple plans available, including active transportation plan in the general plan, the bicycle plan, there's a climate action plan, there's the regional transportation plan. So I think coordinating all of them before committing to developing a new plan, it sounds like, you know, it says to create an active transportation plan. So instead of saying create, should we just say review and coordinate coordinate existing local and regional active transportation plans to identify multimodal infrastructure improvements that would increase mobility for residents and visitors.
Wondering if our public works director wants to shed any light on this one for us.
So specific to transportation, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Orbach. There are regional transportation plans. We do have a bicycle transportation plan. I want to say it's pre-2015, maybe. Yeah. And so that is in the transportation world, very outdated. The plans at the RTC get updated, I want to say every five years. An active transportation plan is often a standalone document that does incorporate things like our climate action plan. Like you said, they're very interrelated. But specifically, an active transportation plan makes us eligible for all kinds of Caltrans funding. So I would recommend that we, maybe it doesn't end up here specifically, but in the overall public works world that we do maintain that goal.
Then, then yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent. If it's gonna give us some money, let's do it.
Additional comments?
For number two, don't we have a Capitola improvement program already? So should we, should it should just be maintaining the Capitola? I mean, capital improvement program versus creating a new one?
Let's say create and maintain.
No, I thought we have one already.
So technically we don't.
Oh, we do. We do have a lot of long-range planning that is scheduled and has financing plans independently, but the city does not currently. Most cities, many cities do, not all, but we do not.
Okay. And you might as well stay there, Jessica, because I have more questions. The third one, you know, when this came on to the consent agenda last meeting, I actually had a lot of questions, but it was just for the RFP, so I didn't ask those questions and didn't pull the item. But my concern is for the cap, the cap is just a GHG emissions document, right? It doesn't contain any anything related to weather events. So the statement that we are implementing the climate action plan and hazard mitigation plan to build and maintain cities assets so we can respond effectively to weather events. The responding to weather events thing, I feel like is more of a like coordinated with OR3 and utilize the city's hazard mitigation plan to build and maintain, you know, the city assets so we can respond to weather events, to weather events. So I'm not understanding why the cap is in there. Because it's GHG emissions.
But then the, down in community safety, which I realize we're not there yet, we recognize the OR3. So maybe that's where it should be, or you'd rather pull it up for strategic priority. I don't know.
I think the climate action plan is more than just a GHG emission inventory. It also includes specific actions to reduce GHG moving forward.
Okay. And then considering, let's see, one, two, And then considering, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, adding another item to explore building and zoning code updates that would encourage resilient construction and reconstruction in flood prone areas of the city like the Village.
Hi. So if you wanted to add that, that makes perfect sense to me. Can you, can you tell me exactly how you framed that again? And I'll, because I want to talk about our LCP.
Yeah, I said to explore building and zoning code updates that would encourage resilient construction and reconstruction in flood prone areas of the city, just adding that as an objective.
I think that sounds good. I would say building, zoning and municipal code updates because actually our flood plain is not within our zoning code area. Thanks.
I just want to point out how important it is to have our staff members here and their input. I really value all of the opinions and input, and so thanks for being a part of it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, are we happy to go back to and review the strategic priority goal statement? Or are we okay with the council member with the addition that is listed there for the ADA transition plan being called out?
I would like, I would like to have at least highlighted a word if we go back to it.
I have sidewalks or walkability is a word to add.
I just think something like that would be great, but I'm open.
What if, what if you put, um, build and maintain safe streets and sidewalks and public facilities, maybe?
So it would read, our community will build and maintain safe streets, sidewalks and public facilities that improve connectivity, fostering a vibrant city that is accessible and welcoming for all.
Sounds great.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the second strategic priority. And again, staff is here to answer questions as we go through the objectives. Community safety. Any questions or comments to the goal statement following the strategic priority? I do want to shed some light on why it's called community safety instead of public safety. This goes beyond just the typical public safety. Across the country, we usually say community safety because it can encompass things like lighting, parks, other things that are not typical, typically seen in the public safety realm, which we usually see as fire, emergency management and police officers.
I'd like to see maybe proactive training involved somewhere in that paragraph.
Any other additions or edits? Let's move on to objectives. I do see Chief is here to answer any questions if we have them. So these objectives, again, were cultivated out of the outcomes you all were hoping for as well as feedback directly from staff, which included more than just Chief in this process.
I think where it has, in the second one there, e-bikes. Should be noted, just not bikes, but e-bikes.
The last bullet, I think.
Yeah, it has its own.
Okay, I didn't get there yet. But e-bikes, maybe the e-bike should be at the top of the list.
We can prioritize them and move them up if you would like.
No, if it's there, it's great.
Okay. Other questions or edits and additions?
I guess I have a question. What exactly, like what state legislation are we signing up to advocate for?
Hello, council. Well, at this time, I don't believe, we're not signing up to legislate for anything specifically. We're, we're looking at things related to e-bike safety. We know that, I mean, in my career, it's become an issue. The laws haven't caught up with some of the issues that we're addressing. So we're very mindful of what that looks like moving forward. So that'd be an example of staying connected to legislation.
I think I also may have shared at a previous meeting that I've been in coordination with the City of Scotts Valley and the City of Santa Cruz, which is actually also considering potentially advocating for some state legislation around e-bikes. And so the goal would be to be able to have sort of a single letter, maybe to our state representatives that's signed by all three mayors. That's kind of the goal. I think it would be more effective that way. I think all of this is recognizing the fact that Capitola is a very small geographic area and trying to come up with our own special regulations for, you know, cars, e-bikes. It'd be very hard, I think. And so that's the thinking is that at a statewide level, what that, what that legislation looks like, we'll come back to you for approval before we send any letters.
Can you speak a little bit more about that? You know, on that Friday update, you talked about having a dedicated police officer to help with e-bike safety. Is that something we are sharing?
Yeah, I can talk about it.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
So in terms of doing some, what we would call very directed enforcement and identifying that the, the school zone is, is an issue at the, we, the times are identified because when the children are getting out of school or going to school. So trying a pilot program to looking at two weeks out, we skipped this week because we knew that we were going to be facing some heavy rain, but starting next week for 14 days, assigning an officer that is, works with the bell schedule when the, when the youth will be out riding their bikes and doing some directed enforcement and education regarding e-bikes. We've, we've implemented similar models, my, going way back to when we've had issues in the Village related to activity happening with our bars, and we've had to do a lot more directed enforcement and education to get people to get, gain compliance and from an ABC level also as well as public safety. So shifting that model, of course, it's youth, so it's a different approach, but that's the idea.
Is the enforcement, like ticketing citations, like what?
Could be, could be citations, could be confiscating bikes if they're really dangerous for kids to be on, calling parents. So could be. But the idea is really outside of a major emergency where that officer would be pulled from that location, that that officer would really be focused there and, and maintaining their focus in that area as well as establishing relationships. If we have some level of continuity, then that's, that's important in terms of long term gain as well.
That's exciting. Thank you.
We'll see how it goes.
And just a refresher on when we talk about objectives, about how we like measure one, it's like just what I was trying to get to with when we talk about like the emergency operation plan, like, like that's a living document that, but it's, I think it's great that, you know, obviously the police would have one, but how does it engage with the community? So under an objective, or is that something that measures to the objective to make sure that there's community involvement in an emergency plan, a natural disaster or something like that? I was wondering, where's that measured? I know it's probably not listed here, but where does that come in, Maddy?
There's not a measure for a performance measure related to that and the involvement itself. However, there is like a number of related e-bike incidents listed. You also have an increased year over year in police public education programs. Those are both listed as performance measures that are called out. And that's in on the information packet on page 11. If you want to look at the performance measures, they're all listed there, and those were identified by staff as ways to track progress on each of these objectives.
Are the performance measures something that we should be providing feedback?
Not typically. So typically, performance measures are not provided feedback from council as they are more what is staff capable of reporting on? And the reason is we want to make sure that performance measures do three things. One, the data is easily and readily available and staff can pull it and don't have to start doing new things to find that data. The second is what is our national, state and local ways in which to report on performance measures? These are typical across the country and some of these are standard, and these, we make recommendations as consultants to staff in that. And then the third really is that is reported back to you on the status of each objectives in that performance measure is the trackability. But typically, no, mayor and city council do not provide feedback on performance measures and neither do the public. Those are more at the staff level direction and not the policy level. Any additional questions or comments on the objectives? Thank you, Chief. Our next area that we'll talk about is attainable housing. Questions or comments on the strategic priority or the goal statement?
I'm wondering if, I think it just continually comes up when we discuss housing opportunities or development that maybe the infrastructure somehow be addressed. It seems like an important word typically when we've been discussing this, so I don't know if we want that in the, right there or if just part of the objectives. It's up to you guys, but I just want to make sure that's noted.
It's funny, we, actually, that was something we had talked about in depth, and I'm not sure if it's in a different section that we decided the infrastructure should be in.
I think it's actually in the infrastructure one, if we want to bounce back to that one.
There's pieces of the attainable housing in infrastructure, but the word itself, infrastructure is not in the goal statement for attainable housing.
Yeah, we went back and forth internally, talking about different ways of doing it.
Okay. Well, Katie, I'm open to what you think. Just putting that out there. No, I think it's, it's definitely very important that as we're thinking about our housing, to be thinking about infrastructure.
I agree with it being highlighted. I mean, when we have projects that come in and they don't go through a CEQA or EIR or something, then it's something that's not looked at. And so to highlight it as we look at that as a priority, then infrastructure is getting highlighted, I think more is highlighted in different places, probably the better.
Yeah, not to add another word to all those commas, but maybe we could put infrastructure in with, after opportunities or something.
I will say I would make the suggestion, Katie, of adding it at the beginning. We implement our housing element and infrastructure that balances diverse housing. That would be the edit or addition I would make.
Sounds great. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All righty, if there are no other comments or questions on strategic priorities, let's move on to objectives. Comments and questions on the objectives in this priority area?
I would add for number two, to adopt regulations and programs to streamline development approvals for different housing types and create opportunities for housing affordability at all income levels.
Councilmember, will you repeat that one more time, please?
I said, to adopt regulations and programs to streamline development approvals for different housing types and create opportunities for housing affordability.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
For number three, I would add pursue grants and additional revenue sources to assist with planning for infill housing production and maintaining existing housing stock.
Any comments there, Katie?
Can you expand on infill?
So we know we are only 2.2 square miles. So planning for infill just means increasing density in what we have already existing. So that's ADUs, et cetera.
Can you go back to the beginning? What's the main objective of this? All right, thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
We're in, I'm going to keep going. For number four, I would say evaluate opportunities to incentivize housing development on the Capitola Mall site and along the greater 41st Avenue and Capitola Road corridors.
What's the overall measurement of this if we take a step back? It seems like we're putting exact words into a directive. How are we going to look at this overall when we go back to looking at this plan? As we look back at the vision, step back to look at it? We talked about streamlining and what does that mean and what that correlation, correlation is back to planning and the whole process of kind of, you know, how do we take this and then step back and look at where this guiding the city?
So by, typically, we follow the like Streamlining Act, and whenever there's certain types of applications that based on the state requirements, there's certain timeframes you have to meet. As a city, though, we really do try to, in the way we manage our planning applications is not to make them too cumbersome and make sure they go through a process, but we more try to expedite, I think would be the terminology that we utilize within the department, or be efficient efficiencies. So streamlining, to me, is more of a technical term utilized by the state in terms of, but they're all very similar words.
Right, I'm just, I'm trying not to make sure that we're not zoning in an exact word that is tying up, you know, your department to a certain process. Because like obviously ADUs, they have certain timelines by the state, and then you guys will, I mean, the process in Capitola as a whole is pretty fast compared to other cities, which is a compliment to the city. Staff and everything, I was just wondering, just trying to look back, you know, those questions on how that looks to the overall planning of housing.
I can talk about the performance measures if that helps, Katie. Some of the performance measures that are listed in this are like number of units, number of single family, number of ADUs. So for that tracking piece that you're talking about, council member, that's where that will come out.
Also, within our annual update to the state, they track how many days from the time an application comes in to the time it gets a permit for entitlement, and then also from the time we get a building permit to the time that it is submitted as an application to the time we issue a building permit. So we're tracking all of the time, the timelines associated with that. It's a good question because I don't think the document will define all the terms we're utilizing.
Right, thank you.
I was going to suggest on number one, collaborate with property owners, developers and nonprofits, just adding the word property owners.
I was wondering, I was going to ask you, do you think that the planning commission needs to be included in that? If not, that's fine.
I think they play a different role.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Katie, for number five, I'm just not sure what this will look like. Do you mean we're going to advertise affordable units to people? Is that what you mean by improving communication about housing options?
So in our housing element, we're dedicated to getting the word out more to the public on just not only the resources we can provide, but the regional resources, the state resources and national resources. So really just, we've been updating our website to communicate where people can go that are in need, whether it's needs for accessibility or low income housing or vouchers. So just trying to a lot, put out, put out more information for the public on resources.
And then for number six, maintain and improve character of existing residential neighborhoods. I would say adding the word historic. So maintain and improve the character of existing historic residential neighborhoods.
I don't think we should just be historic. I just think it should be all neighborhoods.
We could reword it to say maintain and improve the character of existing residential neighborhoods and historic districts through thoughtful design.
That works.
To get both.
And also to consider another objective, to streamline development approvals for remodels and second story additions, so the existing aging housing stock can be maintained, improved and/or expanded to reduce the review time and cost of projects for homeowners and improve neighborhood aesthetics.
I think that's something that I was getting discussed and was tabled through planning, right? Wasn't that going through a planning process? You were looking at doing that?
So we were reviewing.
So we were reviewing design, looking at the process for planning review, and that was something that was considered by the Planning Commission last year, and then we placed it on hold.
It's going to be addressed this year, right through the planning?
So we're going to bring it back to the Planning Commission to discuss again, so.
But we on council can also make it a priority.
Yeah, I'd second that.
I would dispute that. I don't know if we wanted to get into this conversation, but I dislike what the state has done to the city of Capitola, just like a lot of the other cities. And the streamlining, it sounds like a great idea, but to take away all of our powers that they have, I don't like to us to reaffirm what the state has done and have that several times in our objectives. That's my input.
This is just for single-family homes and second-story additions. So we are not increasing density this way. We have aging homes that are dilapidated that need to be redone. This will just help our residents, really, the single-family homeowners. It'll cut the costs, and it'll cut the time in terms of, in terms of the project. And they still need to meet all the objective standards. There is no, they are still meeting like the, whatever the objective standards are, you know better, Katie. They still need to go through building and code and all of that. So I don't see an issue.
I appreciate that, and I, we do need to do that for existing homes. It's the term that's used over and over again, streamlining, which basically means they're taking away the powers of the city. That's all I wanted to say.
Katie, I think when we went through this in planning, just speaking from being a planning commissioner, we were going through this, and you put a nice matrix together for the planning commission, looking at, I think there's a misconception of what some prices were and costs and stuff like that and everything. Maybe something that gets brought back through to planning and let them go through the process. And, I mean, I think we all have appointments on that commission to go through, to look at that and make a recommendation. I know it was one thing, I think we ran out of time, is December meeting, it was tabled to move forward to the next commission, but there wasn't, like, there's just a misunderstanding what fees work like, were like, and then also some things that have been streamlined that weren't updated in the codes. So can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, within the city of Capitola, because we are so small, the timeline for a typical applicant to get in front of the Planning Commission is similar to that of a zoning administrator, which we do not have, but it's because we have less projects. So in a really large city, typically, their, their streamlining is through having a separate process in which you wouldn't go before the Planning Commission for less intense projects, such as a second-story addition or an addition to a single-family home. So we did talk through like the timeline for those events. We were trying to come up with a way in which to make it more efficient. That was the goal of the Planning Commission, as well as not adding additional cost. But as councilmember Jensen said, we did, we had really stringent housing element implementation that we had to adopt by the end of 2024. So it was something that we said we'd go back to the Planning Commission with to take a look again. So how can we be more, I'm going to use the word efficient, and get from start to end in a faster fashion and not be more expensive to the applicant? So that was something we were going through. And at the same time, one big goal in there was really to encourage public participation, make sure noticing is, people are noticed, so keeping the community involved at the same time. So that is something that we will be bringing back to the Planning Commission.
I appreciate the process it went through because it is very granular, you know, and so you took right from zero and walked us through the plans of what the fees were. And so I would, I would not like to circumvent that process that they were working through. And I know there's two new members and to hear their input and then have it as a recommendation coming back forward, I think that'd be the best, myself. That's what.
I was just going to say, I don't, if wording is an issue, like streamlining or whatnot, maybe using the term efficient or equitable, efficient and equitable, something like that. So we're not, we're not like, oh, here, we're going to go build all these crazy things. Like this is going to be very specific to already existing things, whatever you guys think sounds the best.
Yeah, I was thinking that, hearing councilmember Orbach's proposed objective, to me, it just sounds like committing on behalf of the city council to do what we're already doing with the Planning Commission. I think it's important to call that out. And if there is an issue with the language, I would personally be open to altering it. But I think that's the general message, from my understanding, is that we want to create a faster, more affordable process for smaller types of building improvements, which I think basically everybody would agree with.
And I think that's what we were going through in planning, going through those step-by-step, those processes. So it wasn't, you know, we went through the mundane steps of looking at what those were as efficiencies, and it just, just from a time lapse standpoint. So to circumvent that back and forth and that progress that was made, I think was, I thought that was very, much got community involvement and involved in that process and looking at that. So that's all I would like to make sure that we, it went back to them and so that they had some input onto that. And maybe you could give us some stronger suggestions and led by you, Katie, on how we can get to that point.
Okay, without having the exact verbiage that you had later, I'll try just improve efficiency of review process to single-family homes and second-story additions.
Katie, to do what? I guess what the goal is. To finish, it's a logic model, to finish what the goal of that is.
To preserve existing housing stock. In our quaint community.
Improve, yeah, improve aging, existing structures or something like that.
To improve aging housing stock?
Yeah. Improve, preserve, yeah. Improve. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're also improving, I think, aesthetic, too, by building.
And meet those RENA numbers.
And yes, taking out those ADUs.
Okay, so improving efficiency of review, of the review process for single-family homes and second-story additions to aging or improve, we said improve twice, but.
We can also work offline. I think we have enough direction based on that, that I can work with Katie to make sure that we have it clear and concise for you all. Thank you for the discussion, too.
Sorry, and Katie, just real quick, what is the average turnaround time in Capitola for an ADU?
For an ADU, we are consistently in compliance with the 60-day turnaround. And that's, it typically would only take 60 days if there, if we needed to send back out comments and receive. Our first review is within 30 days always.
So we're far exceeding right now.
We are. When you look at the report that goes to the state, it doesn't take into consideration every time we ask for revisions. So when you look at the HCD site, it'll show that we're, there's a longer term. But if you were to subtract out the time it takes the applicant to resubmit their changes, we are definitely within the 60 days always.
Can you just make sure you pass on to your staff? Thank you for that.
Katie, can I ask you another question? When projects need to go to the Planning Commission, how much time does it take staff to actually make a presentation and report it?
From the time that it gets onto a Planning Commission agenda?
Sure.
So typically, from the time we get a complete application, we'll take, we'll take applicants forward to development and design review without a complete application. And then after development and design review, we typically get it onto Planning Commission. There's a noticing requirement that noticing has to go into the paper three weeks in advance. So typically, if we were to have a complete application, you'd get to Planning Commission within about a month and a half. Oftentimes, we don't have complete applications. So we often, with probably 50% at least of our applications, there's one incomplete letter that goes out asking for additional items.
What percentage, what percentage of staff time would you say that is?
Working on staff reports and.
Yeah.
It's easily, it's over 50% of staff.
That is huge, considering you guys are three people in the planning department. Considering that our priority is to focus on economic development, and we don't have an economic development department in this city. I think it's huge. We can save a lot of time, staff time, to focus on some of our other priorities that we're putting on the strategic plan. This is why I am, I would like to see a better process so that staff do not need to spend so much time on preparing for Planning Commission reporting. Thanks for that.
Any additional comments or questions on attainable housing? Seeing none, we will move on to the next strategic priority, economic opportunity. On the goal statement, are there any questions or additions? Seeing none, are you all okay to move on to the objectives? Great. The objectives for this.
I guess I do have a question. Maybe it's a stupid question. What, what is our regional shopping identity?
That is a great question. So part of the discussion that came up here is to have that and maintain the idea of Capitola Mall and places for people to go in the village as well. But I'll turn it over to Katie for more details.
Sure, so our, the area along 41st Avenue north of Capitola Road, so between Capitola Road and the highway, is regional commercial. It's our, it's a zoning district. But so that really is the focus of maintaining our regional shopping identity, where we have a lot of the larger anchor stores along 41st Avenue. And we really, we do consider 41st Avenue as more of a regional destination, and especially with the auto.
It was also another way of saying, you know, cities can either bleed sales tax of their jurisdictions or accumulate more sales tax of their jurisdiction. Capitol, we get more spending than our residents spend in town, and that's part of that as well, is continuing to foster that kind of environment on 41st, which helps fund all the other things that we want to do in this town.
Thanks for the explanation.
Objectives. Questions and comments on economic opportunity objectives?
I've not seen anything in here about this, but I was wondering if we could add something related to promoting high-quality jobs. I don't think the city should be, you know, exclusively promoting economic development in the areas of retail and tourism, which often aren't tied to high-quality jobs or jobs that can sustain the cost of living here in Capitola.
Katie or Jamie, any comments?
I remember we had a pretty good conversation about, I think it was Michelle helped us with this during the last workshop, about sort of the difference types of economic development, right? Because often people think about economic development in terms of that, jobs. And then cities sometimes think about economic development in terms of revenue for the city. And so there's those two different things. And I can't remember whether or not we talk about jobs in a different, different value. Is that possible? No, this would be the place for it.
This would be the place for it. However, I will remember part of the conversation is the, and this is a policy objective, but is it the city's role to attract and have high-quality jobs? Or is it the business's role and we support, or the city supports, excuse me, the role in the business side? So that's kind of the directive, I guess, and where that would come from.
I believe that's the city's role.
And it is not mentioned anywhere else in the plan, so this would be the place for it. Councilmember, we can come up with an objective and present it back to you, too, for the end part of it, to complete the logic model of what that would look like.
Please, thank you.
I think I just have a little bit of language edits. So the first one, to develop programs and identify zoning code amendments to support new and existing businesses citywide. And then for the second one, to evaluate existing public parking and onsite parking requirements to support economic growth and resident needs. That's number two.
One second, can you repeat number two again?
Yeah. To evaluate, evaluate existing parking, public parking and onsite parking requirements to support economic growth and resident needs.
I remember there was an extensive conversation about this. Jamie, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think we thought about that, that, the point that you just added, that's really contained in item one, I think, was staff's thinking, because that is where, the zoning code is where the parking requirements live. And the intent here was looking at kind of our public parking stock, thinking about the public parking stock and how we utilize the public parking stock, whether it's metered parking, permit parking.
Parking district.
Parking district, all of those things. So that was the logic behind it, but I don't think there's any harm in making the change to kind of 61 half dozen the other, if you want.
Okay. And then my other comment for this is number four, complete 41st Avenue corridor plan to create objective design standards, develop and improve public spaces to build a sense of community and promote economic activity.
So I can speak to that in that, the city has objective design standards for multifamily and commercial right now, so those are in place. But within number one of develop programs and identify code amendments, that could be a code amendment, if you wanted to, us to work further on those.
I mean, because we are going to look at the 41st Avenue. I think with the visioning plan and potentially thinking about a specific plan, I guess that would fall under this objective if we do that.
So this is, this was geared more towards a corridor plan, which is not really part of our zoning code. It's really a standalone document to attract businesses to the 41st corridor through like multimodal enhancements and looking at the public realm. So I think the, if we want to talk about improving our objective standards, it would really fall within the zoning codes.
So is this 41st Avenue corridor plan something that we haven't done yet, and this is something we're thinking of doing?
Correct, so that will be coming to you in the next, the RFQ closed yesterday, so.
That's the visioning plan, we're, that was in a meeting, okay, a few months ago. Thank you.
Based on that comment, I would make a suggestion not to add that, councilmember Orbeck, just because it is included, number one, just that improving standard, or design standards piece, because this is more specific to the plan itself. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. We are moving on to healthy families, community, and environment. So this objective is, based on your feedback, staff actually made the suggestion to combine a few things because this objective was smaller. There were two smaller objectives, and combining them helps to support an overall vision for this. So that is why this is a combined strategic priority. Any questions or comments on the goal statement? Seeing none? Okay, objectives. Questions or comments?
I think this just isn't the right place for it, but what about with the lack of health care that we have in this area and somewhat failures of being able to serve all that are in the area? Where does that fit into this?
So this could fit here under healthy families, community, environment, or it could fit under economic opportunity. It depends what the intent is. So is the intent to hopefully retain or attract a business that provides that service? Or to provide, or to enhance the services that already exist in the city?
I think our goal should be to work, you know, within the whole county to be able to provide enhanced service for the lack of service that we have right now for many families. And then also to obtain, you know, maybe more healthcare coverage facilities, if you want to put it that way. So there's not just a one place that we have to go for services. I think that's an issue that's failing right now in our community.
So that would be two objectives that I heard, and I would actually recommend that the first one belongs in here, the families piece. You said work with the region to provide healthcare services for families. That would belong here, but then I think the obtain more healthcare services and facilities would actually belong up in economic opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
I read that letter too, from our resident, Mr. Wan, and it's a very difficult, it's a very difficult situation because what insurance they have dictates where they can go, what the, I mean, it's a really hard, I mean, I work in healthcare, so I understand. We don't have good answers. I would say, Jerry, I know you're sitting at the Center for Aging Council, that's a good place to probably tap into and ask about the resources we have for our seniors. There has to be already mapped out, like if you have X insurance, these are the places you go. That should already exist so we can have that more accessible to our residents. I think that's helpful. But it's a hard situation. I mean, I believe in universal healthcare, but can we get California to pass it? So that's a hard, hard situation because not everyone will agree to paying for more taxes so everyone can get the healthcare that they should get.
Yeah, great suggestion. I was talking more about overall healthcare for all families, age groups and everything across the region. It seems like it's very much lacking. I know the difficulties of just getting services when you go to our local hospital that's so understaffed and not even enough beds and stuff like that. So I think we should, it should be clearly identified as, I view it as probably a strong word of failure for our community, but I think it is right now.
I have to say, as a healthcare provider working through COVID and being an NP for 10 years, we lost a lot of clinicians during COVID. And even in my clinic in APTUS at the time, we had a requisition to hire new doctors and they were open for years. We interviewed so many candidates and the number one feedback we got was it's too expensive to live here. So even for doctors to not be able to live in this place because housing stock is so low and it's so expensive speaks volumes in terms of what we need to tackle in this community to have more housing options for the workforce. And I think, you know, we can't just look at one lane and one thing. We can't solve this problem with healthcare until we make housing affordable, where people can live here and we can retain the workforce who will care for our aging population. Like all of those things are dynamic and it's really important that we think about all of it.
Just want to say that I really appreciate the conversation and bringing up this topic. I don't have a lot to add, but I'm fully in support of working, having these discussions to see if there is anything we do, although this is, you know, a national issue. Thanks.
I think an interesting report that I read recently is the Santa Cruz County Workforce Report. I think Katie, you were in it. You had acknowledgement in that report. And actually Nathan Q., my planning commissioner, was one of the authors in that report. And one of the areas that we see growth in, in terms of opportunity, is medical care because the perceived need in this community will continue to grow with our baby boomers and our aging population. So that is an area we can tap into because I have to say, as an NP, we have hired so many NPs in the last five years. We have, I think, doubled in size in the last maybe five, six, maybe seven years I've been there. I've been there for eight years, but we've doubled in size of nurse practitioners alone. So this is an area we can tap into. Maybe we need a medical clinic along 41st. And, you know, I know that doesn't give us sales tax, but that will bring in jobs, that will bring in clients or patients. And when there's more movement in an area, they will shop, they will eat. So let's look at the spaces. Let's look at the space on 41st that's been empty for three years. Where is that, that sports place? And talk to the Kaisers and Sudders in different places so we can maybe fill it up. Thanks.
I know we need to move on, I just wanted to reiterate. So, you know, we talked about real-life experiences. My daughter, who's 25, she has friends that are just graduating from nursing programs and they have interviewed at multiple places around here and they're having to go out to Stockton to get jobs, just jobs, not housing. And so, you know, I think to encourage some additional support that places like are built so they can then, who want to live here, who can live here, at least can have housing. I think my daughter has two friends right now that had to go get a job at Stockton and one in Lowdy. So I think it's just information that we should look and identify so we can move it off from there.
Just want to add that I think this is, you know, a perfect example of how the city can focus strategic economic development efforts to provide high-quality services and high-quality jobs to our community.
So with that discussion, I will bring back two suggestions for those two different objectives, also utilizing the words you all said at the end to help support that for families, aging population and to support and to provide high quality of services. So I'll present, we'll present those back to you all. Any other additional edits or comments?
Can we go back to sustainable infrastructure?
We have one more. Can we finish? I just have a suggestion. Can we finish accountable government and then go back? Great, thank you, councilmember. So our last one is accountable government as the strategic priority. Any edits or comments based on the goal statement? Let's look at the objectives and we can always go back if we need to. Here are the objectives to obtain and support that goal. Any edits or additions?
I think one objective might be to have more transparency into the process. I know we have a fact committee, but is there a way that things can be rolled up more into like pie charts and stuff like that from a communication standpoint on the city's website about finances and we're talking about establishing more transparency and getting, asking for more engagement from our community? A lot of this, I think, is the way we give out the information and the perception of having information readily available in, I'd say, more graphic part of it, other than a massive budget that's 26 pages long or longer, having it in pie charts and highlighting those sorts of things. So I was wondering if that could be an objective to obtain that.
Do you think, second from the bottom, we could include, you know, state-of-the-art fiscal tools or something like that? Is that, I think that that was kind of part of what we were thinking about with that last one, the second last one. But we don't specifically call out that fiscal sort of transparency, which certainly could be a part of it, make it more explicit, if you think.
And also, I would say, there's probably a fine line on this, but like, out of the fact, you know, it's not a real like sanctioned meeting, right, per se, but like, is there a follow-up in the sense of like, what was discussed and what's going on in those meetings so people know that they are represented by the business associates, they are represented by at-large members and stuff like that? And there is these communications going on, other than a lot of times, I think the budget process goes, you know, from all the way to council and the budget process. And I know that, you know, and I appreciate every other month that Jim does those, but is there a way that that's posted? I don't think there are like meeting minutes or information that's communicated that. I was wondering if that could be highlighted and added on to.
Well, I'm going to put my past clerk hat on. That is a Brown Act advisory body, and so the agendas and minutes are posted on our website for all fact meetings and all of our formal advisory bodies. So if you are, if you're looking for more than that, I'll take note of that.
I apologize, I've never seen them highlighted or--
Okay, yeah, we'll look into that. I think, you know, part of this list of objectives is really trying to be public-facing and just kind of citizen-friendly is what I'm hearing. What you're saying about like appealing graphics, easy to understand, easy to find things on the website, find those agendas. So I love that personally, and I think that that's really what staff was attempting with some of these. Does that kind of cover what you're asking?
Yeah, and I totally stand corrected, they already are.
No, no, not at all.
So I apologize, but at the same time, that I didn't even know, I think we should probably highlight it even more so that--
Totally.
Did you know? I mean, like, we--
Absolutely.
Have Instagram and stuff like that, maybe there's summaries of what's going on at the fact and highlight, you know, more things like that. So I did not know, so thanks for correcting me.
That's a great point, thank you.
Yeah, I would kind of like to go off that a little bit, not to go off on a complete tangent, but maybe, I don't know when our website was last like updated or--
2020.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, things are moving fast and sometimes I feel like when I operate that website, it's not completely user-friendly. So to your point, I knew about the minutes and things, but sometimes I'll just go to look for our meeting. And if I'm like, oh, it's like asking me what body are you looking for? And it's like, if I was just, if I didn't know that we had all these advisory bodies, I wouldn't know what to look for. So if there is some other way to make things more visually pleasing or more easy to understand or something, that might be, I don't know if that's part of this, but just since we're going down all the rabbit holes today.
I would make a suggestion for number one, and the last one that Jamie mentioned from the bottom, that these would be action steps that come out of that. So they might be on direct objective, but they, since they fit underneath here and the implementation planning part, staff can tell you how they plan to do that with those comments.
Cool, thank you.
I just wanted to take a second to agree with the general consensus here regarding more accessibility. I think the city really has a lot of room to grow in making its documents more understandable and easily accessible for the general public. A lot of it is very complicated and very dry. And I think some really good examples of, you know, things that the city's been doing lately is like the Capitola Waves, is the city council meeting recaps on social media. I think those are, you know, a great direction that we should continue to evolve in. I've also seen some really interesting financial transparency portals for other municipalities online, and I think we could potentially look into something like that. But yeah, I think there's a lot that we can do with creating visuals, videos, you know, blurbs, things that people can just casually absorb the critical information without going into the minutes and things like that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. We can bolster our social media and our web-based services for the city.
This is great feedback, thank you.
Just make a comment that, you know, we're spending all this time to make this strategic plan and have all these objectives. I want to, moving forward while staff creates their reports, to have a strategic plan consideration line so that we know what objective we're meeting with the projects we're moving forward.
Councilmember, do you mean in the agenda packets, having a piece?
The staff reports, yes.
Understood.
I like that too, and I even saw, I think it was at a League of Cities conference, there's a company that the City of Santa Cruz is working with that where they tie every budget line item to the strategic priorities. So I don't, not sure we need to go that far, but I think, yeah, having more thought about how exactly we're spending city resources and being as transparent as we can be is important.
Is now the time, Maddie, to go back?
If we have no other additional comments on accountable government, yes, we can go back up to infrastructure. And I will also ask, are there any other areas, now that you've looked at everything and reviewed everything, that you would like to review again in the process?
One comment before we left that was just how they're listed out. I think you had it listed out before on the overall thing, just as we're kind of summarizing it, just, and I'd like to look from like A through Z, you know, alphabet order, other than just, I didn't want to prioritize them just by--
Oh, the strategic priorities themselves?
Exactly, when we do, yeah.
So this one, going back to alphabetical order?
I think--
Okay. That is a great point to make, because sometimes there are, especially community members who might not hear what we're talking about today, who will think and prioritize ones based on the order that they're in. So I would highlight and strongly recommend that. Alphabetize, no, alphabetical order.
Alphabetize.
All righty, we have--
Question, yeah. I just wanted to say, if the objectives could also be alphabetized, that would be helpful because right now they're, you know, numbered, and I think that even more so would lead people to suspect that they're in a specific order.
There was one comment on infrastructure.
Yes. I don't see anywhere in our strategic plan, the plan, thinking, implementation in terms of us, the city hall, being in the floodplains. So can we add a strategic kind of objective to consider city hall adaptation and possible relocation to this document?
I will say there are two places that facilities actually show up, under healthy families, community and environment. Number two, improve the city's facilities to support opportunities for community building, planned programming and social interaction. It goes to that one there for the facilities piece, and as well as we talked about it, there's a performance measure that also talks about it, but I will find it. Jamie, did you have something to add?
I think staff saw that in number three, implement the climate action plan and hazard mitigation plan to build and maintain city assets so we can respond to weather events. You know, that's, and it's broader than that. We certainly could be more specific to say, you know, take a look at city hall. But that is, I think, if I remember right from our last hazard mitigation plan, I think it was like project number three on the list. You know, it's like a pump station, Stockton Bridge, city hall, I think, in terms of the big hazards out there.
I guess I had one question, not to be redundant, but I don't know if maybe along with the healthy families, community environment, do, does anybody else feel like we need to touch on like sidewalks and streets and things and that? Like that kind of, to me, also goes along with health, but I know we talked about it prior, so I don't mean to like over-stimulate that, but--
I will give one comment on that. There are a lot of objectives listed in priority areas that could go in other places, and that happens a lot, where they, you don't want to start mentioning the same ideas in separate places because then you're tracking and just updating. But you can, there are objectives that definitely could move to other places. And so instead of talking about sidewalks in infrastructure, you could move it to healthy families. That happens with a lot of these objectives, and staff actually took a lot of time figuring out where they think these can go, specific to three different reasons. One, what kind of staff is in charge of that area, as well as what do we think that staff, frontline to directors, can do in each of these areas and kind of where would staff then focus?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
And just one other comment. For economic opportunity, kind of economic development, can we consider having a economic development advisory committee for the city? You know, like Katie said, we have the different zonings. We have commercial, regional, commercial, we've got CC, community, commercial, we've got MUV, we've got MUN.
got CC, community commercial, we've got MUV, we've got MUN. Um, those are, I think, the four kind of commercial zoning areas. We can recruit people from the various zoning commercial areas to come together. Maybe, I don't know. Just, just an idea. We don't have to, but if we're going to focus on economic development, so having representatives for, from the four zoning areas, we can help develop surveys, distribute surveys, get more information, disseminate information, um.
It's certainly an option. There's pros and cons. You know, we, we actually had a meeting with a consultant that the City of Santa Cruz is used to directly recruit, um, new retail tenants. And we're kind of weighing pros and cons of whether the opportunity might exist to, to maybe partner with the City of Santa Cruz to also do something like that. So my suggestion would be, you know, where do we want to put our bandwidth? You know, and that's a question, I think, where's only so much bandwidth, you know, it's part of Katie's time, it's part of my time that focuses on economic development. How much resources and where we want to put our money so that it's the smartest possible? And, you know, I don't know whether the committee is the best answer. Maybe there's another one. So my suggestion would be to keep it kind of one level above that. And then we can evaluate that as kind of a action, if you will, under these objectives.
And just to add to that, I think, um, within our objective number one, um, just to piggyback, to develop programs and we're talking about the zoning updates, I think that's the perfect place in which we could create some type of small, um, group that we like, maybe an ad hoc with two council members on it, that we can bounce the ideas for the zoning code update off of, but not have a designated committee, because I don't know how we would keep, um, I, I just, I think if we have a consultant that's working on helping us recruit and as we begin to talk about these things, but I think it's too early to designate a committee. So, thanks, Katie.
Just say that, that I completely, well, I'm definitely interested in an economic development committee. I think that there could be a lot of benefits, including government transparency. I have heard from representatives of BIA that they may be interested in that. Um, and I think just the, the more people involved, uh, in coming up with ideas and solutions would be beneficial. I do understand that, um, that's an added responsibility for staff members. Uh, and I think we, as a council, need to decide, you know, is that a priority? I, I believe it should be, but we will likely need to allocate resources to accomplish that. So maybe we could revisit that during budgeting.
So, um, may I ask you now, um, we have two more things to talk about. One of them is next steps and the process, and you all making a decision about what that looks like. Um, but that is all I have. If that's okay to finish up?
Well, seeing that it's almost 2:30, I think we're due for a quick break.
Yes, sir.
Right back. Chloe, bring this back and then take it to Matty.
Thank you. So, um, Chloe is going to share the end of the presentation. And what I want to cover with you is next steps from the consultant's point of view. And then Chloe's going to ask for a formal, um, recommendation on one of the steps. So, um, we're going to do, we are planning to do a final adoption in March of 2025. What that means is it comes back to you all in a formal council meeting for adoption at that time. Previous to that, you will see an updated draft as well as the results of the community review process, if you all intend to make that and go that way. And then finally, what is important to this, and it's kind of back, all the way back to the beginning of what I said, is that how piece, the implementation plan piece. So that comes up to make sure that promise, progress, monitoring, performance, reporting and implementation all happen. That is a Excel spreadsheet that we provide to staff, um, and how with the action steps, some of the line item, budget items, resources. There's a lot of questions that they ask in there to make sure that all of the steps and the objectives really in this plan are implemented. I'm going to turn it over to Chloe to discuss a little bit of the, what we typically call as the community review piece, um, through Social Pinpoint.
Thank you so much, Matty, and thank you for everything today. You've been really amazing. So I appreciate you. Uh, thank you, mayor and council. So yes, the, the formal recommended action and, and action from council, we're looking for from the group is you've received a presentation, you have provided feedback, which is incredible. And then at your determination, we would be looking for the authorization for us to release this draft plan, once it has incorporated the feedback from today to the public for a public review period. And like Matty implied, what that looks like is a much simpler, um, quicker survey available on Social Pinpoint about the specific draft for the public to read the draft again, once it's had the incorporation of what your feedback from today, and provide very clear definitive, we like this, we don't like that, we love this, wait, what about this is missing? All of those concerns would go through the survey. Uh, we'd also offer that specific to employees as well. Um, the outreach for that review period would look like, as our city manager, um, mentioned earlier, we have a ready to go, but not yet released, because I haven't received your, um, your, your direction to do so. But we have a mailer, a postcard that would go to every resident in the city. We would use our Capitola Wave that you mentioned, um, vice mayor and press release, social media. We would again, um, use paid posts that I think the number a few weeks ago was those had reached over 30,000, uh, people on social media. So we would do all of that and then include this mailer as even more outreach to the public to get to let everyone know this is out there. We want your opinion and we want you to look at it. So that's what that would look like. Uh, but it is up to your direction if we need to go there. So there's questions I'm happy to answer. Did I cover everything?
One point of clarification, the typical review process is about two weeks that this is open. That helps to, um, and the reason for that is to give us enough time to analyze the data, give you all a draft back for adoption in March to hopefully inform the budgeting process that's coming up. That's why there's that review. Um, however, you all can give staff direction and really me direction through them here, um, on how long to have that, um, community survey review, um, open for as well.
Thank you, Matty.
Great. Before we go to public comment, I'm going to ask one more time for any council questions. We had a lot of questions today. So any further council questions? Amazing. That's great. Um, but this time I'll open up to a public comment. People of the public make comment and have up to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll take it back to council for recommendations.
Just a, a point of clarification, um, my understanding the mailer goes out, it's going to be more like a QR code that would take them to. I was just wondering, I thought it'd be important, you know, um, there wasn't a lot of participation in the survey. I know the outreach was large, but participation, let's say it's under 300, just for a point of conversation. Should there be a point in there that we have just a link that says background and then talk about the steps that you've gone through? So if somebody looks at it for a first time and they would say, where did this come from? You could highlight the background. And then I think it's really important, um, for them, for us to highlight the, you know, like Vision Capitola, right? I mean, like, some people think this is overriding, but to talk about how you abstracted that, that, those things that were from whatever the exact date, I don't know what they did, that was finally finished, but those exactly. And talk about the history and everything. So we might get better participation or more positive participation in that. I mean, I was wondering how that can be incorporated. I think that'd be important.
Absolutely. Councilmember, if I can answer your question. Um, so Social Pinpoint is the initial tool that we use. Yes, there'll be a survey, um, that goes on there, but actually the QR code links you back to the original Social Pinpoint. So it has the entire history of what we've done, has an updated e-scan of what we've done. We'll have the planned draft, as you all edited it today, as well as any of the other links, including Vision Capitola, the current budget, um, and other city website links that are actually on that. So all of that information is on one landing page through Social Pinpoint.
Guess I was looking for it to be highlighted more so than just, we, we were just talking about our city website, right? Sometimes you get lost in this data. So I think something flash like, you know, highlighting just in some term words, you know, like, um, you know, we have listened or, you know, the history of Capitola is, has been spoken or, um, and being refined, just to highlight it. And then somebody thinking like, just go down rabbit holes. So that's just my two cents. I don't know what other council.
Well, in that regard, Chloe, is there a way to do like a pop up on the website? Okay. So maybe, I don't know.
Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson, if that would interest you in like a, like, what is your vision or what, how, I'm not the word person, but.
Yeah. So if you don't mind, uh, mayor and council, may I share the city website for a second? And this is just going to be hypothetical, sort of. So our landing page, um, currently, because this was the biggest news, right, recently, the first thing you see is, is information about the appointment. So what we, what I would propose we would do is change that out for a strategic plan project. And this page outlines the whole process, can make this more visually appealing, um, and include, I love the idea of kind of like a tagline, we listened, we heard, we've acted, you know, come up with something fun. And that would all live here. It also links back to the meetings that have been held, because they've been public and there's minutes and all of that. And then the most important thing though, that I want to show as well is the link, which is where the QR code will take folks, is the Barry Dunn, um, Social Pinpoint, poor Matty, I always say the wrong, the wrong title. But this also has something that you're referring to, Councilmember Jensen. And I would definitely agree that we can have some visuals that really highlight all the different ingredients, all the different plans, how many people were collaborating, and, and really make that point so that the community knows what has already been done and then can add feedback. So that's the goal. Does that kind of answer your question?
Absolutely.
Cool.
And is there a matrix that we should be looking for on how we measure if we were successful by, you know, it's hard, because, you know, I had a long conversation with Chloe about it. I mean, um, the community, I look, fail is a pretty tough word, but if we only have 300 or 325 responses, as a community, we failed that we didn't talk more to our neighbors and that we didn't encourage people to participate. And I know you've gone over and over with this on, you know, those numbers are in line with, you know, standards. But I think our city's better than other cities. And I, so I would, you know, encourage us to have more participation. So how, how should we really judge ourselves and look at that? Um, if we got 325 before, you know, what should be our goal? You know, all of us collectively having people look at the draft and we, our goal should be internally from council, but from our community and our commissions and stuff and city staff, you know, should we look at doubling that? What, what do you see as a successful plan?
Sure. Um, so I'll say three things to that. One, this, the survey, this survey as well as the last one are not statistically valid. And in that, we mean that there's no percentage that you typically hit. However, the statistically valid survey, that's 3% of the total population. That is what is considered success in the survey world. This is not statistically valid. The second thing I would say is, we don't just include the survey or who went to Social Pinpoint. I include everyone and any stakeholder process, and that's over 400 at this point. I also would say the 30,000 that got, um, at least clicked on or saw the social media post should be included in that number. And the people who went to Social Pinpoint, even if they decided not to engage, at least they clicked on it and they got information. That was over 1,900 people. Um, I'll say, however, yes, everyone is always striving for more engagement. Since COVID in 2020, across the board, all engagement, um, in civic engagement, in particular in local government, has dropped significantly. Um, so there is not enough timetable, and it was only in the last five years to compare that. Um, but in previous numbers, I would say 3% of the population would be great. Nowadays, it just depends. Um, so there is, we can look towards a certain number or a certain percentage, if you all as council give that direction. Um, however, the longer this process goes out, the longer, um, it takes to make significant feedback. Some people might go on that survey and say, I don't have any feedback to give, because they're okay with the process. So it's always hard to gauge what that looks like. And every question is optional and not required. So some people can skip around on questions too for the survey.
I gave this feedback the last time we had a. I gave this feedback the last time we had a workshop, but it was alarming to me that, you know, 2,000 people went on the website, but only 200, 300 people did the actual survey. And I remember being on my phone trying to do the survey, and it wasn't very friendly. And I think that's one of the barriers, right? Like I had to hop on my computer to actually do the survey. So that's another barrier to get this completed. Can we make it so that it is more mobile friendly?
So this time, taking that feedback that I heard from both council and candidates in the fall, this survey has none of those ranking questions that were the typical frustration. These are all matrix style, Likert style scales. What that means in layman's terms is there's going to be a question, and then they're going to have four selections, strongly agree to strongly disagree for each individual one, and it's easily clickable and goes through the process. Much more user-friendly in that sense, instead of those ranking questions which tend to be more difficult. The question, the survey right now is nine questions. They're very specific and easy to answer in that way. And I think it's a lot more mobile friendly than it was in the previous survey.
I move to authorize the city to release, what is the language, release this draft, the strategic plan draft for public review.
I can second that.
I don't know if we need to vote, but is all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Matty and Barry Dunn for an awesome presentation and guidance.
Thank you all for your work and your time today.
And fill in Adam Clerk. Thank you. That brings us to item seven, closed session.
Okay, so the council will be adjourning to closed session. We will come back down here to report out in the closed session. I don't anticipate that there'll be a reportable action, but probably one to two hours would be my guess.
Great.
Maybe less.